I'd like to call the February 16th meeting of the Lacy School Board to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice that this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon on January 12th, 2023, and as amended on February 9th, 2023, and by posting the notice in the Fork River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Conady?
Here.
Mr. Armato?
Yeah.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Polino?
Present.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
Mrs. Downing?
Here.
Okay, we'll go right into executive session?
Yes. Be it resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying; confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload; confidential personnel matters, including but not limited to collective bargaining. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the private session is estimated to be approximately 120 minutes, after which the Board shall reconvene and proceed with business as 7:00 PM action may be taken. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please. Or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going into executive session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 16th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. And good evening. We have an audience down here, too. At this time, we're going to resume our meeting. We've been in private sessions since 5:00. And so now, we're going on to Student Representative Comments.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Tom Riddle, and I'm the Senior Class President.
Hi, I'm Hannah Miller. I'm the Student Government Executive Board President. Freshman class news. The freshman class is working on holding a third fundraiser this year, and the Chipotle fundraiser was very successful and went well. Sophomore news. The sophomore class is working on holding their lawn sign fundraiser for the spring and graduation. The sophomore class is currently working on a Lacy Apparel fundraiser. Sophomore class is planning graduation flower and T-shirt sales in June. The junior class news. The junior class is running a Gertrude Hawk fundraiser, and the fundraiser ends on Wednesday, March 1st. Senior news. The senior class is working on the June 14th senior prom. Senior prom is on Wednesday, June 14th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, and is going to be held at the Carriage House in Galloway. Seniors should look out for information regarding the senior raffle soon. The Executive Board news. The SGA elections will be held in April, and information will be shared with members at the March SGA meeting. The next SGA meeting will be held on Monday, March 6th, at 1:40 PM, and all are welcome.
Tonight, we are recognizing two unsung heroes. First, we'd like to invite Gianna Baldwin up to the podium. The Student Government Association would like to recognize Gianna Baldwin as the Unsung Hero for the month of January. Gianna is an excellent student and very active in school activities. She's involved with cheer, choir, student government, and is planning on participating in the upcoming Spring Musical. She constantly participates in class and works extremely hard on her academics. Above all, Gianna is a very sweet and compassionate student. She helps her peers both in school and outside of school. She is a hard worker, and she is dedicated to her clubs, schoolwork, and helping her peers. She deserves the Unsung Hero Award for January for all of the hard work she has done and for the work she will do during her time at Lacy Township High School. Congratulations. Now, we'd like to invite Ryan Galala up to the podium. For February 2023, Ryan Galala has been selected as this month's Unsung Hero. Ryan can be seen coming to school every day with his positive and kind-hearted personality. Ryan uses his hard-working nature and fantastic personality to build connections with classmates and faculty alike. Ryan would best be described by his peers as polite, smart, and a great role model. Outside of the classroom, Ryan Galala is a varsity athlete on the Lacy Lions track and cross-country teams. He is also an active member in extracurricular activities such as National Honor Society and a mentor for Big Brother, Big Sister. During the summer months, Ryan works as a lifeguard at Lake Barnegat, showing his support to the community. Ryan's abilities were proven to be excellent last year when he became an Eagle Scout of America. In his free time, he enjoys going out on a warm summer afternoon and boating around with friends and family. After graduating high school, Ryan plans to go to college for engineering down south. His ability to brighten people's days on and off the track is why Ryan Galala has been selected as February's Unsung Hero. Congratulations! And that is all for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before our parents leave, a round of applause to all of our parents. Okay, at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Prair. Your Lieutenant. We're President Downing. Welcome to our students, little ones, big ones. Welcome to our February Board meeting. And congratulations again to Gianna and Ryan. Is Ryan still here? Who's Ryan? There he is. And to his family as well. Round of applause to all of you. Like I do every month, I just want to recognize our student artists. Cora Simis is a 3rd grader at Cedar Creek, designed the Board Agenda cover, and Lily Lindsay is a 4th grade student at Cedar Creek, designed the cover of the Superintendent's Report, which will get hung over at the Board Office. So, round of applause to them for their artwork. All right, before we get to Mr. King and our student presentations, I just want to touch upon a topic that I think we're all very much aware of. This past Monday, I sent a letter to the entire school community, and it would be appropriate for me to say again that we are all deeply saddened by the tragedy and loss of a young student in a neighboring school community. So, we express our condolences to the entire family, and I ask that we take a moment of silence. Thank you. So, the challenges that our students are facing in and out of school are extensive, and they're very real. And we're very, very much aware of things that are happening in and out of school. And so, we've taken some steps that we feel are necessary to provide students with as many supports as possible. I hope you've all had the opportunity to review my letter that went out on Monday. It is posted on our website, and apparently, the Lacy Patch has picked it up as well. So, this week, in grades 5 through 12, our students heard a very, very specific message from their principals about the help that is available to them to navigate academic, personal, and emotional challenges, and, most importantly, where they can go for help. So, we started out on Monday, and that's not to say that we just started it. Our students have had counselors available to them throughout the entire school year. But we felt that it was very important to take these steps, considering all that is going on not too far from here. In the younger grades, the message was a little bit more age-appropriate. Our counselors did visit every, every classroom to further the discussion, and, most importantly, so that we have the opportunity to listen, and we will continue to do that. I also mentioned that we are forming a Steering Committee to review existing policies as they relate to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, cellphone use, policies that relate to culture and climate. And the committee is also going to collaborate on finding programs and presentations that are best going to serve and educate our students on how to navigate these tough times, specifically, how to use social media responsibly, because that seems to be the crux of a lot of the problems that we're seeing. I've already received many, many emails from parents that are interested, and community members, by the way, that are interested in serving on that committee. So, I will be reaching out to them. I already have via email about when we're going to have our first meeting. So, I appreciate the response. I also want to thank Chief Kenny and Detective Stewart for their support in fostering the amazing relationship that we have with the Lacy Township Police Department. I spoke with Chief Kenny last night, and he is committed to making sure that we have police representation on the Steering Committee as well. So, we are grateful for Chief Kenny, his efforts, and the relationship that we have with our officers. So, those discussions will be ongoing. They will be purposeful, and we will certainly continue that throughout the school year. If there are any other parents that are interested in serving on the committee, obviously, when committees get to be too large, they become unproductive, and so, I'm certainly open to having, you know, several committees, perhaps by grade band, by school. So, we have to see what kind of response that we get. But we will be starting those as early as next week. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. King to not only present our Seniors of the Month, but a few other presentations as well.
Good evening, Dr. Prair, Board of Education. Guests, I have a lot of great presentations this evening to share with you. The first, we will start with our Seniors of the Month. Our first Senior of the Month is Anna Roth. Anna, come on down. As Anna makes her way down, please, a round of applause for her family who's here. All right, we're going to watch a short video of Anna and her accomplishments.
Hello. We're here to celebrate February's Seniors of the Month. Our first Senior of the Month is Anna Roth. We're going to watch a short video on her accomplishments.
Hi, I'm Anna Roth, and I'm proud to be named February Student of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Congrats, Anna, on earning Student of the Month. We're so happy that your hard work, your effort, your discipline, and dedication are being recognized this month.
At LTHS, I participate in both the winter and spring track and field programs. I do the 400, 200, and I also participate in doing the triple jump.
Anna is a high-achieving student with an excellent attitude to match. I'm lucky to have the opportunity to teach her in my honors, anatomy, and physiology class.
Ever since your freshman year, you've come a long way, not just in the classroom, but also outside, setting records for the school, for the school track team, and, plus, not only that, you are one heck of a student in our STEM Academy.
One of my favorite memories at LTHS was breaking the school record in triple jump my junior year, and then breaking it again this year in winter season.
Anna is an outstanding teammate in class. She is one of the first people to jump in, to be ready to help anybody. She's able to integrate into any lab group. She continuously makes really great, wonderful contributions to my lectures in class and is always ready to answer questions.
Outside of school, I like to spend the majority of my time with my family and friends, but I also like to work at Concordoro with my friends as well.
Your bubbly personality really shines inside the classroom every single day. I cannot wait to see you. I missed you this year a little bit, but seeing you outside of class, it gives me a whole nother perspective on you, and I cannot wait to see what you do when you get outside of high school.
After high school, I plan to attend a four-year college where I will pursue a career in the medical field, possibly nursing, and I also would like to participate in the track and field program there.
Anna is a student that any teacher would be fortunate to have, and having her in class has helped me become a better teacher. Congratulations on earning Student of the Month, Anna. You deserve it.
Best of luck, Anna, on everything you do when you get out of high school. I cannot wait to see what you accomplish. Congratulations once again on winning Senior of the Month.
Why don't the parents come down?
All right, another round of applause, please, for Anna. All right, our next Senior of the Month is Zach Brewer. Zach, come on down. Zach is also joined by his family, so a round of applause for his family who's in attendance. And we're going to watch a short video of his accomplishments next.
That's great, Anna. Good luck with all your future endeavors. Our next Senior of the Month is Zach Brewer. Congratulations, Zach. Let's watch a video on his accomplishments now.
Hi, I'm Zach Brewer, and I'm proud of you being named February Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
I'm so happy to be here to congratulate Zach Brewer on being named February Senior of the Month. I can't think of a more deserving student for this honor.
Zach is a wonderful student with an amazing personality. I've known him since he was a baby, and known since then that he is going to be a spitfire. He deserves Student of the Month for all the hard work that he's put into school and everything he does outside of school and on the field.
Between his academics, his athletics, and his well-rounded character, I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award.
Some things I've participated in at least at Lacy High School have been football, lacrosse, NHS, and STEM Academy.
He has set himself apart by being able to read something, watch something, and grasp the concept behind it rather quickly. He is level-headed. He is mature. He takes his work seriously, but he doesn't take himself too seriously. He has a good sense of humor. He's developed an excellent rapport with his peers and with his teachers. All of these things make him the perfect candidate for Senior of the Month.
Some of my favorite memories would be out on the sports field, my friends and teammates just during some routine practices and everyday things.
Zach is always in the hallways smiling, willing to make someone's day. He's always saying hello, always happy, and he's overall a great kid who just consistently does his best.
Zach demonstrates his true character on a daily basis. His interactions with students and with staff are always respectful. He's willing to go above and beyond to help anyone in need.
Outside of school, I like to participate in physical activities as well as spend time with my friends and family.
He's an outstanding young man who will do great things in the future.
After high school, I plan to attend college and pursue a degree in the medical field.
Zach, thank you so much for asking me to speak about you today. It has truly been my honor and my pleasure to do so. You've made us all so proud, and I know you will continue to do that, no matter what path you choose when you leave us. Best of luck in the future.
Best of luck in all you do in the future, Zach. I'll be right there if you need me.
That would be another no from the family. All right, another round for Zach as Senior of the Month. We are once again honored and privileged to announce and recognize an Eagle Scout with Dan Sofield. Dan, come on down, please. As Dan makes his way down, his family's here as well, so a round of applause for them. All right, as a reminder to everybody, to be an Eagle Scout, there's a few accomplishments you must have. First and foremost, you have to earn 21 merit badges, including the following categories: First Aid, Citizenship in the Community, Citizenship in the Nation, Citizenship in the World, Communications, Cooking, Environmental Science, Personal Fitness, Camping, Family Life, Personal Management, Emergency Preparedness, or Life Saving, Cycling, Hiking, or Swimming, among some other badges that you get along your way. You also must serve six months in a troop leadership position, plan, develop, and give leadership to a service project for any religious organization or any school community, take part in Scout Master Conference, and, most importantly, successfully complete an Eagle Scout Board of Review. Dan did all these things. His project was creating benches for the food bank here in Lacy Township. So, there are benches outside that he helped create for the food bank. So, once again, we are very, very proud of Dan and all his accomplishments. Being an Eagle Scout is an honor. It's not for everybody, but for those that make it, they've made a true impression on the community that they serve. So, Dan, thank you very much. Oh, Dan. And a picture.
Does Mom and Dad want to come down?
That's another pass on the family. Nice job. Another round of applause for Dan. I am privileged and honored to have one more recognition this evening. Eric Strohman, Eric, please make your way down here to the podium. Come up here, sir. Eric is being recognized this evening for something very unique. He is being recognized for his selection to the All-State Symphonic Band. So, before we begin that, please, a round of applause for his family who's here as well. Eric has the privilege of being chosen to be a member of the All-State Symphonic Band on clarinet. He is the first Lacy Township High School student to be selected for this honor in 18 years. So, it's been a while since we've had someone stand up here and receive this recognition. Good news is, he'll be performing with the All-State Symphonic Band on February 25th at the Atlantic City Convention Center, and February 26th at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center in Newark. So, he has two very big concerts coming up. Also, we are incredibly proud and wish him the best of luck as he prepares for his concerts, and also, for his eligibility to perform and audition for the All Eastern Ensemble. So, on behalf of Eric, I must say, I've seen him play. I've heard him play. Phenomenal is an understatement. I'm so proud of him right now, the fact, when I signed his paper to first try out for the Regents and then to try out and make the All-State Band, it was a true honor for me to be a small representation of your accomplishments in that. So, Eric, congratulations, my friend. You deserve it. Play well, play often, and keep going, okay?
Mom, get in the picture.
Oh, no, no, Mom, no.
Are you sure?
Another round of applause for Eric. Dr. Prair, that concludes my student presentation for the evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, another round of applause. Great. All right, and like I say, every month, behind the success of every student is an amazing teacher who helped them get there. So, a round of applause for all of our teachers. So, for quite some time now, we have been recognizing staff members of the month. So, we have our two this month, and what I'm going to ask them to do is come down here with me so we can have them on camera, and then we have our short video. So, we're going to start with Renee Rizden, who's a special education teacher here at Lacy Township. All right, so while Mrs. Rizden is making her way down, she was nominated by her colleague, Mr. Mermin, who has this to say about her. Renee goes above and beyond each day with her students in the Steps Program. She is the first to volunteer to help other teachers throughout the building with a variety of projects, and dedicates herself to special needs students with Special Olympics, Unified Club, and Challenger League. The after-school game nights that she has organized bring students back to the building and keeps them involved in a positive way at the high school. Renee also advises Hero and Cool Kids, bringing positive role models from the high school to act as examples and mentors for our Mill Pond students. So, on behalf of the Lacy Township School District, Ms. Rizden, congratulations.
This is a special thank you and congratulations from your challenger and Special Olympic parter.
Congratulations. Another round of applause for Ms. Rizden. All right, and our second staff member of the month is our preschool teacher, Ms. Gianna DePalma. You with this? And while Ms. DePalma is making her way down, I have a little something to read about her. Ms. DePalma was nominated by her supervisor, Mrs. Krokowski, and her colleague, Ms. Danziger. This is what they both had to say about Gianna. Ms. DePalma's confidence shines through and shows in her students and power professionals. The students love coming to her class, and the support staff love working with her. She has a warm rapport with her students, but still holds them to high expectations. Ms. DePalma has dedicated the past four years to learning and growing in early childhood practices and education. She is currently finishing her Masters in Autism Spectrum Disorder so that she may better serve our most complex learners. On behalf of the Board of Education and the school district, congratulations, Gianna. All right, Mr. Liddell, I believe we have a video?
All right, we're here again to celebrate a Staff Member of the Month at the high school. Again, let's go.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Attention, everybody. Let me have your attention up from here real quick. Ladies, gentlemen. Each month, the district celebrates a staff member of the whole district. They pick two staff members to celebrate as a Staff Member of the Month. This month, I'm proud to say, Ms. Rizden is our Staff Member.
Hold her applause.
Renee goes above and beyond each day with her students in the Steps Program, helping to socialize them while teaching to multiple levels of students within the same class. She is the first to volunteer to help other teachers throughout the building with a variety of projects, and dedicates herself to special needs students with Special Olympics, Unified Club, Social Skills Club, and the Challenger League. The after-school game nights that she has organized along with the Unified Club bring students back to the building and keep them involved in a positive way, and her efforts with Challenger League give students a reason to stay active and play sports in a healthy, non-competitive environment with their peers. The Special Olympics team she advises not only brings home medals, but puts smiles on our students' faces. Renee also advises Heroes and Cool Kids, bringing positive role models from the high school to act as examples and mentors for Mill Pond students. I really can't say enough about the energy and positivity that Renee brings to work with her every day, and I'm so happy that she has been recognized as Staff Member of the Month.
Hi.
Hi. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I have something for you.
Hi, thank you.
I want to say congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Because you're a Staff Member of the Month at Mill Pond.
Thank you.
We're so proud of you.
Okay, oh, thank you so much.
This is a great accomplishment because this is definitely peer-related. Your staff members, your friends, your family here all think that you are doing fabulous stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Well, we are super proud of Mrs. DePalma. She is very worthy of being Staff Member of the Month. I've been proud to watch her grow up in front of my eyes. Her confidence is starting to shine as a teacher. We have multiple parents... We have multiple parents that have reached out to us about how happy their kids are coming to school every day and being a part of her classroom. And one of the best things about Mrs. DePalma is her positivity. We've had a lot of changes in preschool over the year, and she's been always welcoming to new staff members in her classroom as well as new teachers to the program, offering them advice and supplies. And her positivity just radiates throughout the program.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Danziger. I'm a preschool teacher at the Mill Pond School, and I nominated Gianna DePalma, who is also a preschool teacher at the Mill Pond School, for staff member of the month because Gianna is one of the most amazing teachers I have ever met. I have been fortunate to watch her grow over the past four years as a beginning teacher to now like a very seasoned teacher. Gianna is the first one here every day in the morning. She's the last one to leave. She has amazing communication with her parents on a daily basis. The more challenging the student, the more time Gianna puts in trying to figure out how to help. I have watched her go around the building and ask for resources and support to meet the needs of the most difficult children. Gianna has grown so much, and it's just been amazing and a pleasure to be by her side and watch her turn into the incredible preschool teacher that she is today.
Okay. All right, before we play our Lacy Turn Into Three Minute, another round of applause for our amazing teachers. Okay?
Happy Monday, Happy Monday, Happy Monday. Happy Monday, Happy Monday.
So when we first started the Lacy Minute, we were begging for footage, and now Mr. Mermon told me a couple days ago that he has more than he knows what to do with. Are we? Tell me when. Good? But regardless, I'm going to ask our staff members to just keep sending him material because it can never be enough, right? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sylvia to introduce our auditors.
Hey, we have our presentation this evening for our 2021-2022 audit. We have Mr. Bob Allison here from Holman, Frenia, and Allison. I first wanted to say thank you to you and your team for working so patiently with us this year. It's been definitely a challenging year with the transition of me into this position and then having my position as the Assistant Business Administrator open and then not open and open again. So I appreciate your patience. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Allison.
Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for the cooperation, too. It actually was a smooth year, I believe, and we have a very good order report. For those of you who've been on the board for a while, you probably know that these order reports are usually given in December and filed by December. But for the past few years, the state has been late in getting out information to the, to us and all the school districts with regard to pension numbers and other post-employment benefits, which have to be part of the financial statement. So even though your order was kind of completed around December, we had to wait until very recently to get the rest of the numbers in. But it was a very good audit. Rob Mulligan was our lead on the job, and he will be talking about the numbers in a little bit. I just want to let you know that, and everyone has a little handout here, I believe, the numbers that are here or the pages that are here, that relates to the actual report that you have there. So you can review this later at your leisure. We have an order report, which is a clean order report. It's unmodified, which is the best report that you can get. There is a special paragraph in this year called an emphasis of matter because there was a change in accounting principle. This year leases need to be reported. Previously, they were, they were not reported, and now capital leases need to be reported. So you'll see something different on the financial statement. You'll have an asset that says a right to use, and then you'll have the offsetting liabilities with regard to that. So that alerts the reader that there is something different. We have another report on internal controls and compliance. We do test with controls and for compliance with state and federal regulations and grant regulations, and we have no comments with regard to that. Everything we tested came up fine. We have a third report, which is a report on compliance and controls again, but this is specifically related to major grants. The federal and state government wants auditors to look at grants specifically, not just the financial statement as a whole. So we do have a, a, we have an analysis of what grants that. We look at every year. And this year, the state major program was the General State Public Aid, and the federal program was the Child Nutrition Cluster. And again, we have an unmodified report, and we have no comments or recommendations with regard to that. The only, I guess, comment we'll call, but not a recommendation per se, is we do have to report that if your food service has over a certain amount of cash surplus, we need to report that, and you and most other districts, because of some, you know, state aid and federal aid with regard to COVID, have built up some reserves, and that will eventually get spent down in certain expenses or maybe, maybe some equipment purchases and whatnot. But, but you're in very good shape there. So with that being said, I will turn this over to Rob, and Rob will talk a little bit about the numbers themselves. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you again for having us. Thank you, Sharon, Jason, for all your help with the audit this year. So I'm just going to be brief about the numbers. So on this second page, we have our general fund, our revenues and expenditures. So just to go over the key highlights here, you had an excess of revenue this year over expenditures of about $2.8 million. That is down a little bit compared to last year, but overall that is very good. The main driver of that this year, as you'll see there, your state sources increased about $1.1 million. It's obviously been publicized that you guys have lost some state aid. This year, however, that was offset with two new grants, stabilization aid and an education rescue grant. Those totaled about $2.6 million this year, so that helped to improve your revenues there. As for your expenditures, there was a slight increase here, but nothing, no outliers there, just general increases across the board as costs have gone up, so too do your expenditures. So in total, your fund balance was $14 million, about $14.3 million, which we have further detail on the third page here. So the district is able to keep a maximum unassigned fund balance to be utilized for whatever purposes they wish. Of 4% of their total expenditures, less some allowable adjustments, this year, the district was allowed to keep $2.9 million of unassigned fund balance. So you guys did keep all of that. The excess money falls into what's called excess surplus, or you can transfer some of those monies into your restricted reserves, which can be utilized for capital projects, for maintenance of the school facilities going forward. So in the current year, you guys had about a $1.1 million increase in your capital reserve, another $100,000 to your maintenance reserve, which you'll be able to utilize in future years. And then your surplus, you have $757,000, which was utilized in your 2022-2023 budget, and then you have another $645,000, which will be utilized in '23-'24. So all good there, nice, healthy fund balance. And then our final note is on the Food Service Fund. As Bob mentioned, the district did have excess cash in the current year. You'll see here the main driver of that is due to a very large increase in state and federal subsidies. The district and all districts in the state of New Jersey this year were given free lunch for all students. As a result, you received more reimbursements from the state, so you had a large increase there. Now, in '22-'23, that is no longer the case, so those monies will decrease. So we would expect that your net cash resources will decline going forward, and there's no issues there. And then you had some operating expenditures increase as well, but that is also to be expected as COVID came to an end, more or less. There was more students getting lunch and more activities, so expenditures naturally increased there. So that will just about do it for us. Thank you again for all of your time and attention, and if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Board members, any questions?
No.
Good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming out. Okay, Board President, that concludes my comments. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Nice wait to start the evening. At this time, we will do public comment. Give me a minute. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the Board President. Comments will be made on one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. And this portion of the meeting is for public comments only, and there are no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. So that being said, who would like to speak? Yes, I'm sorry, yes, student representatives. I know you have a lot of homework, probably. If you want to leave, you may, or you can stay. You're welcome to stay, and anyone else that needs to leave now may. You're staying? Good, okay. Hold a comment, anyone? Good night. Good night.
My name is Justin Bonatatas. Before I begin, what I have to say tonight is going to take approximately 10 minutes. Can I be granted that time or try to split this up into two?
We'll see if anyone needs to talk, and then we'll decide that.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Lacy Township Administration and Board of Education members. I am well aware, when you see this lecture hall filled with the Lacy wrestling community and you look at myself standing at this podium, that naturally you have already made a judgment call on what is to come next. After all, we are all humans, and it is human nature to do so. However, I am not here tonight to point a finger or to blame anyone sitting at that table right now. You have made it extremely clear that the power is amongst your collective group. I, for one, respect that power. I am happy we have a group of adults who make up this committee of administrators and Board of Education members who work together, who have each other's backs in fixing mistakes, problems, and situations in our schools. It is absolutely necessary in order to get things accomplished, to work collectively at the task at hand. I, too, expect and demand these qualities in my student athletes. I expect them to understand personal accountability. I expect them to understand wrong choices, have consequences, but most importantly, that no matter the age of a human being or the title that they may carry, we all make mistakes and continue to do so throughout life. However, it is how we learn from our mistakes, to better ourselves, and move forward that truly matters. We no longer want to go back and forth about the topic of the wrestling room. We no longer want to wait months on months for false promises. I am here to ask you as genuinely as I possibly can to please take a look around this room right now. Look at all the faces in this room. Look at the young children who are here. Look at their parents and their guardians, and understand that we are here for a far more meaningful purpose than the sport of wrestling. I am here tonight to explain why our community needs a wrestling room. I did not grow up in Lacy Township. I did not start my teaching career in Lacy Township, but Lacy Township is where I call home right now. And I will do everything in my power to fight for the children in this town because that is who I am as a human being. I would never expect any of you to truly understand the depths of why this wrestling room is so important to this town. Those lessons would have to come through personal experience, not from my words in a lecture hall. But fortunately, the reality of what I'm going to explain, you do not need to understand in depth as to why we need this. In 2018, I was hired as a teacher and a head wrestling coach. At that moment, you put your trust in me to carry out those responsibilities and obligations of these positions. At that moment, I entered these roles full throttle, with my intentions and goals always being around, always being focused around student engagement and making a positive impact on the children in this town. I pride myself on my ability to do exactly that. I am asking you to trust me yet again, to trust in why I am still here fighting for this program. It is not about winning titles. It is not about breaking records. It is not about adding years to the banner in the gymnasiums. It is only about saving children. It is only about redirecting the path that they may be on. It is only about making a positive impact on another human being's life. I encourage you to take a second and think quietly to yourself as to who that one person is or who that group of individuals were that changed the direction of your life. Who made such a large impact on you that has molded your life in ways you can never thank them for? I again encourage you to look at our students in this room. I encourage you to look at the adults we have in this room. I respectfully ask you to look directly in my eyes when I say this with the utmost confidence. We are those people. I am that person. We have held, we have had recent graduates come back to this lecture hall and put their hearts on your tables, explaining how this program saved their life. We have had young men come back and make themselves as vulnerable as humanly possible, opening up about tragic events that have happened in their personal lives and how this program and what we are doing inside the walls of a wrestling room has changed their life forever. I ask those students to come back and speak on my behalf and behalf of our program in hopes you would understand that there are more students, many more students, with their own personal battles that need us as well. We have every resource we need in Lacy to continue to make the impact on the youth that we are. The only thing we lack is a space large enough to fit our entire family. We need a place to call home. I knew from day one of taking over this wrestling program in Lacy that I would be able to grow the program to incredible numbers while making a positive impact. Teaching and coaching through the platform of wrestling is what I was born and bred to do, not to produce winning seasons and titles for this town, but more importantly, to produce kids that would... We now have 50 high school student athletes, 50-plus middle school student athletes, and a youth program of close to 100 children.
Coach, can you just hold on one second?
I only have two sentences.
Okay.
We have held up every end of the deal as a program and community. These 200 kids are important. They matter. The next 200 to come are just as important, and what we will do for them as they mature through their childhood is not only necessary, but it is special. It is lifelong. It is forever. I'll pick back up after you give me two. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments with wrestling?
Did you have anything else? You do. Okay. And then I'm going to make a couple of comments.
Wait, wait. Wrestling? Come on up. Just watch your step going up.
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Karen Coon, Bill Coon's mom, Matthew Coon's grandma. I was a junior high school and high school English teacher in East Orange for 28 years, and I'm here to talk about Lacey's wrestling program. Wrestling is a sport going back to the dawn of time. Modern wrestling requires strength, alertness, resiliency, and above all else, agility, quickness, and discipline. Wrestling is what helped turn my son into the man he is today: strong, kind, loyal, caring, and disciplined. He began wrestling in the third grade, joining our town's rec department. By eighth grade, he was beginning to love wrestling, but he had a bit of a wild side. He never backed down from a fight. In fact, he kind of liked looking forward to them. Luckily for the whole family, he found a place with Columbia's wrestling team and their amazing coaches and excellent wrestling program. Under their tutelage, he learned to funnel all his angst into one area: wrestling. And a mere 140-pound freshman blossomed into a 190-pound winner by his junior year. His coaches persevered, seeing something special in him, and he never gave up. By senior year, he was named co-captain of the team, and he went on to have an outstanding season, winning the regions and capturing his second district crown. He was seeded third in the state tournament. After high school, he went on to wrestle at Rutgers University as a heavyweight. None of this would have happened without his coaches and their interest in a very immature young man, as his confidence improved, his grades improved, and his life as a high school student did too. Wrestling opened a lot of doors for him and gave him the courage and confidence to walk through them. I'm so proud of what he has become. None of this would ever have happened without extraordinary coaches and a wrestling program fully supported by the school. All the things that wrestling helped my son achieve can help our Lacey wrestlers achieve too. Wrestling is such a good sport for keeping kids on a correct path in life, for giving them guidance in their lives. Wrestlers learn early on in this sport, in order to win, they need to work together as a team as well as individuals. They all depend on each other, and becoming disciplined students, athletes, and young adults, isn't that what we want for all our children? To become productive members of our society, fair-minded, kind, and good? I'm here today to ask you to support Lacey's high school coaches, the kind of coaches Bill had, and our wrestlers, who so remind me of him at his best. You have such talent here. Look at the track record of Lacey's wrestling team. It's amazing, but they need your help. They need more space for training all the wrestlers that are now in the high school and the wrestlers coming to Lacey High School from the lower grades. Over the years, they have raised the money to outfit a wrestling practice room. Unfortunately, they don't have a room dedicated to wrestling, so please don't fail them. Help them. Give them a space of their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before Coach comes back down? Thank you.
Please do not let a single child fall through the cracks, because we cannot provide a home for them. Please do not leave this meeting and for one more second believe this is not important. The words of you telling us we support you are great to hear, but they are simply words. These children deserve action. These children deserve proof that you support them. How many times as a child or even as adults have we heard, "Words are not what carries meanings. Actions do." Please provide action and provide it with a sense of urgency. We have two condemned classrooms attached to our wrestling room. This season, there were openings placed in those classrooms, and this program has never been happier than those short-lived three to four days. It was perfect for what we needed at the time. After visually seeing these openings on Friday, our program and community felt such excitement. By Monday morning, on the official first day of the season, I am called into a meeting to be told the walls will be rebuilt and we cannot use that space anymore, devastating to say the least. We are now told the school's architect says only three students are allowed in each room at a time, yet just a few years ago, each classroom operated with a teacher and full class every period of the day. Never an explanation as to why, never anything in writing, just word of mouth from one human to another. Now, we are also told that we needed 15-ton HVAC unit to go up on the roof in order to be granted the classroom space. In 2012, when the classrooms were built, there was also a small HVAC system put above the wrestling room, instead of replacing the old unit with what was necessary. How those classrooms were built to begin with is completely irrelevant at this point, but nonetheless quite ironic. There were multiple things that have transpired that we all wished to not, so be it. We need answers, but more importantly, we need a solution. As a program, we have spent our money on architects, HVAC companies, and professionals who all say that this is a problem can be resolved much easier and affordable than what we are being told. Of course, our school architect disagrees, and in return, the response we have got for the last five years is a simple no and to be patient. If he says we need a 15-ton unit, then please explain why, and give us a list of items that we need in order to obtain that space. The children in this town desperately need that space. Our program, which offers these students so much more than a wrestling room, needs that space. Please knock down the walls, or please give us those openings again. We will pay for everything. We will get a new HVAC system. We will buy all new mats. We do not want any money from our school district. All we want is a space to call home for these children. The walls can be opened up, and we can begin to work on HVAC requirements as we progress. There are always ways and reasons on why something cannot happen. It is time we focus on the one reason why this needs to happen, and that reason is the children sitting in this room right now. We can find ways for it to work, we just have to, as a collective group, wholeheartedly want it to work. I am here at this point begging for help, begging for some support. Not for myself, it is for the children in this town. It is the reason we are all here. You volunteer your time, efforts, and love to enhance the lives of the children in Lacey. It is time we do exactly that. No stop signs, no setbacks, no excuses. We must push forward together and make this happen. We do not have another year to waste. I am here telling you that, and I mean every word with conviction. We do not. It needs to happen now. Our students need this now. Please do what is right. Please take a step out of the lens that you have looked at this through for years, and do what I ask of my students and my student athletes: change the lens, see things from a different perspective, and in doing so, I hope you are able to understand the importance of allowing us to continue to make a positive impact that we make, but finally, on a larger number of students. Let us love them. Lastly, I will leave this speech with this. To the parents who are fearful of bullying in schools, please sign your child up for wrestling. Get them involved with the sport, as it is much larger than just a sport. It is a lifestyle. The number of students that have come to me throughout my 12 years of experience in high school wrestling, looking for self-confidence, self-esteem, and overall just love, is astronomical. And I can promise you, for as long as I call Lacey home, our program will offer them all of the above. Supporting the wrestling program, who has helped so many young individuals, is called being proactive. Wrestling is a sport that does not discriminate. The weight classes allow for all shapes and sizes, not to mention both boys and girls, which we are also falling behind on because of our space issues. Surrounding schools have fully rostered girls teams, and we do not even have enough space for only our boys team. We have the right people, and we have them right now. We just need a space. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? In the back? No, you can comment, comment, comment.
Hi, Scott Saunders, D Road, Forkett River, New Jersey. I'm very happy that there was a response with the situation in the other district. I'm glad the superintendent reached out. I'm happy you're starting a committee. The one issue I had with that was there's a, maybe a partnership or some kind of cooperation with the Anti-Defamation League. They have a very severe political history, and I don't think public schools should be a place for political indoctrination. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
A lot of awards are being held out, handed out tonight. I do not have any awards to give, so I apologize. Without friction, there can be no growth. I don't know the author of that quote, but that seems to be the theme for wrestling, at least tonight. Hopefully, I can add a little bit, not necessarily friction, but shed some light on some things, and hopefully there can be some growth so that...
Excuse me, sir. Can you just state your name?
Oh, my apologies. Joe Schoenlieber, Wickham Road, Forkett River.
Thank you.
So over the last six days, I'm going to just go over a couple bullet points that happened, some things that happened to me that I hope does not happen to anyone else going through the hiring process here at Lacey Township. In light of the economy and shortage of teachers and subs, I wanted to tell the board how excited I was to receive an offer to teach as your next long-term PE sub. However, that position was removed hours before today's meeting, and I was lucky to actually call HR and get the news that I wasn't being hired. So I guess my question is, how exactly, in six days, can someone receive an offer for employment, accept that offer for employment, be really excited, and confirm that with HR? Have a start date set, and then hours before an agenda, where I've been told I have to wait to start until it's announced, just hours before I learn, and are awaiting that announcement so that I can begin an exciting position, is now all of a sudden it's been removed, and no answers are given? So on the 10th of February, I was offered a position by a principal at Mill Pond. I was excited. I verbally accepted the position, but there was an unorthodox request. Can you start on the 17th, which would be tomorrow? And I said, "Well, yes." I didn't even mention, "That's a little unorthodox. I don't even have a contract yet." Well, we've been given permission to move expeditiously because of the leaf replacement. I guess the situation was the individual was, I don't know the exact details. Anyway, I wasn't given those details. My understanding was that there was some authorization to move quickly. So I kind of expected a contract so that I could review the contract and start immediately after this meeting. Well, that never happened. I never received any information. I actually reached out to HR on the 14th, got some details, and then requested very respectfully, "Hey, if I'm going to start so soon, can I have at least an opportunity to tell my current employer out of respect for them and the kids that I was teaching?" Because I think that would be asked of here, if you wouldn't want someone just leaving and leaving you hanging, or your kids in Lacey Township hanging. So I respectfully asked if there could be a two-day change in my start date. A day later, I was, received a phone call from HR, said, "No, unfortunately, you need to accept this job, or we're moving to the next candidate." Okay. So with a little bit of trepidation, I was really looking forward to, over a year and a half of looking forward to this position for full-time employment as a PE teacher here in Lacey, because I moved from Pennsylvania. I was very excited, so I accepted the offer. I said, "Okay, I'll report for work." And I was informed by HR that I would have a contract waiting for me on my, on the morning, which would be tomorrow morning. So I was excited, even though it was a little bit uncertain. I don't have a contract yet, I haven't gotten a chance to review it yet, but still excited, excited to be a part of the staff, which I've been waiting a year and a half for. And then I find a message this morning. I returned that phone call two hours later, only to be told that I've been removed and they're moving on to another candidate. So I've been asked to start a day after this meeting announcement. I was asked to squeeze my, my situation to a start date, which was uncomfortable. I informed my current employer that I wasn't going to be coming into work on Friday, because I have a new job, and now I don't have another, I don't have a job. I've lost that employment, and I've lost apparently this job too. So what I'm, I'm not making any accusations on specific individuals. What I am hoping, that where there's friction, there is hopefully change, that this never happens to anyone again. As a single dad of six children, looking very much towards becoming part of the staff here at Lacey, only to find out that I'm no longer employed anywhere. So...
Sir, your five minutes is...
Thirty seconds, and I'll finish up. Thank you very much. To date, my understanding that Lacey Schools has been non-compliant with 150 minimum minutes a week with health class. Hiring me would have solved that solution. Now we're going back, backwards. Lacey will now be non-compliant again by not having a second PE teacher to teach health. That's really unfortunate. And I was, as I hung up the phone with HR today, I heard the secretary say, "This crazy PE sub that we are no longer hiring was on the phone and wants to speak to Mr. Zalinski." Well, I'll tell you what, that floored me. If being here today, fighting for these kids that need health and PE, if that means I'm crazy, then I wear that banner with honor. So I hope that this doesn't happen to anyone again, and I hope you reconsider, because even in light of all this, I still would like to be a teacher here at Lacey. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, come on up.
Colleen Brandt, Eagleswood Avenue. I just have a few brief comments. As everyone knows, I love the sport of wrestling. Wrestlers don't have to be the biggest, they don't have to be the strongest, they don't have to be the fastest, they just have to have heart and desire. have to be the fastest, they just have to have heart and desire. The beauty of wrestling is that there are many weight classes. There's a weight class for everyone. It's a sport where everyone fits. That is, except in our room. It is my understanding that half of this year's starting lineup was not in the room last year, because there wasn't enough space in the room for them. Can you imagine what those wrestlers and what this team could have accomplished if that half of the starting lineup had the benefit of being in the varsity room with all of the varsity athletes? There's a mental health crisis among our youth, as our neighboring community just recently experienced. I wish it was an isolated incident, but we know all too well that it is not. What message are we, Lacey Township, sending to our own wrestlers? That after having a collective meeting at the beginning of practice, that half of those wrestlers are then banished to another room? We are sending the message that they don't fit in, that they aren't good enough to be in the room with everyone else. That is a terrible, terrible message to be sending to our youth, and we can fix it. We can fix it. There is no reason for it. They should feel included and not banished. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.[686.54][686.54][applause] Are there any other comments? Come on up. People in the back, if you raise your hand, can you raise it real high? Because the lights, we're having trouble seeing your hands.
Allison H., Forkett River. Eleven months ago, I stood here and speaking about the current crisis concerning our children and our community. I warned that bullying in school and out of school is a problem. I warned that children were committing suicide at a higher rate, but here we are. A few months ago, a mom came up to this board meeting and spoke about her daughter cutting herself and harming herself. The HIBs are a joke. Do you hear the students at Central crying for help? Do you see them outside protesting? Have you seen the videos of the daily fights? Not Adriana's, not the others. There are more. There are over hundreds of those fights. Yet, here we are. Have we, as a community, done enough? No. Can we? Yes. The PTA was great at getting Mallory's Army to come and speak to the students at the middle school and at the high school, and do a presentation for the parents, yet not enough parents showed That auditorium should have been full and packed to maximum capacity. The engagement should have been packed with not just parents, but children, to hear the message that Diane Grossman was trying to provide for not only the children, but the parents of our community and other communities, whoever wanted to come out. And yet, Mallory's Army is coming again on February 22nd, but there's crickets. Nothing promoting this just yet. This event, in light of recent events in Central, should be hyped up, should be, emails should be going out, reminds should be going out, letters should be going home to parents, to get people in those seats. I feel that setting a committee up for bullying is a step in the right direction. However, this was also said 11 months ago as well. Setting up stronger standards for bullying is another step. Making bullies accountable for their actions is yet another. Like Diane Grossman recently said, "When children can predict the consequences of their actions and their behavior, they will stop bullying." And some never get caught. And some victims are too afraid to talk, because they feel they have no voice. We, as a community, can do better. Parents need to show up more to not only board meetings, but to learning and listening forums as well. I recently was the only parent to show up to the January Learn and Listen Forum. That's pathetic. We can do better. Sitting behind a computer is a wonderful thing than telling people what you want to do. Anonymity is a marvelous thing. That's what bullies do. I know firsthand that, as parents, we are all busy, and we all have things to do. But please, parents, pay attention to your children, pay attention to what they're trying to tell you, as well as what they're doing on social media. Parents also need to stop living the "not my child." If every person in this world was perfect, we would all be living harmoniously. But this is not the case. I am thoroughly disgusted at the situation that happened over at Central with the death of Adriana, a young child taken too soon due to bullying. My first thoughts were, what is Lacey's response? How do we cope with this? What if this was us? What would the response be if it was not just a physical altercation against a student, but teachers? A student goes against a teacher? And I'm not talking also about physically, I'm talking about verbally and mentally. Or what would have happened if that beating was worse? The other thing that came to mind is, what if this was a sexual assault on our property? What would that, what would our response be to that? And I'm not talking about just the girl, I'm also talking about boys as well. Or are we going to blame the victim for either what they were doing, wearing, or if it was a hazing situation with an athletic club? I know I will get a lot of flak for saying this, and Diane had said it in her Mallory's Army presentation, but cell phones do not belong in schools. They only belong to those who need them for medical purposes only. There are tons of phones in the schools that parents could reach out to get a hold of their kids.
Allison, your five minutes-
I'll come back.
Are you on my-
I'll come back if I have to.
You may be able to stay there. Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment? Okay. Can we just finish our comment, and then you? Okay. Go ahead, Allison.
No problem. To have children protesting and speaking out, we, as adults, should be listening. I ask the board to look into a club that I mentioned a year ago at the Learn and Listen Forum. If we could have a sad club, then we can certainly start an anti-hate and bullying club. I also ask the board to implement the messaging system that Diane Grossman spoke of. This way, it gives our children the opportunity to be able to speak freely about what is bothering them or what they see. This is also a great benefit, as children can remain anonymous if they need to do. The great loss of Adriana has sent shockwaves, not just through our community, but also nationally as well. And now, it is bringing an advocacy to bullying, the bullying epidemic that is rampant in our school systems, not just ours, in schools all across the nation. Our district is no exception. We have a long way to go, but we, as a community, if we want change, we have to be the change. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
Ed Scanlon, Nurk Avenue, Borneo Pines. I just have two questions about the budget, I know you, excuse me, about the agenda. I know you don't answer questions, so then I would just ask that, at the time they're voted on, if somebody could refer to these questions. And that would be, Items 12 and 13 refer to two buses, a 54-passenger, and two vans, wheelchair-assessable 24-passenger. And what I would like to know, either now or at the time they're voted on, are they replacement buses for buses that are aging out, or are they additional for the fleet?
They are replacement buses.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, on 17, there's an appointment for a special ed-related service provider. Is this provider being used to replace any existing staff, or is this the standard outside facility?
It's standard outside facility.
Thank you.
In addition.
If there are no further questions, I'm going to- All right, go ahead, real quick.
The board just spoke. Dr. Pereira said she had some comments.
Yeah, that's why I was waiting to see if everyone-
You may read her my comments after she speaks, so would you mind doing that now?
Sure.
Are there any other comments, though?
Everyone spoke that wanted to speak tonight? Okay.
Okay.
All right, Dr. Pereira.
So, before I get to wrestling, I just want to thank you, Mrs. Hollister, for coming up again, and I hope that you will volunteer to serve on the steering committee, because a lot of the things that you brought up, we are going to discuss, you know, at our first meeting and beyond. So, thank you. I know it's hard for you to come up here and talk about those things, so I applaud you for that. So, as far as the wrestling, you know, we've had groups come out in the past. I recall, a long time ago, our hockey parents came out, because we didn't have a hockey program, and now we do. So, their voices were heard, we hear you loud and clear, but what I want, right now, is to give our wrestlers a round of applause for their tenacity. So, a round of applause to all of you.[1286.58][1286.58][applause] So, this is what I'm going to say about that. I just had a conversation with Mr. Bonititis this afternoon. It was a productive conversation. Would you agree? Those conversations will continue. It has our full attention. You all have our full attention. But there are a couple of things that I have to say, that you're not going to want to hear. We have a financial crisis in Lacey Township right now. Our state aid cuts have been immense. Mrs. Sylvia, what is our state aid cut projection for this year?
For '23, '24?
Or as we build our budget?
Yeah.
Hold.
It's, we have speaking, someone's speaking up here. Thank you.
We have a projected $2 million state aid cut coming in '23, '24.
So, that's just this year. We've had many cuts in the past, and we've had to cut many things. What we've tried not to cut are programs, like the hockey program, like the wrestling program, like other athletics, like teaching positions. So, when we have a problem like that, we have to sit down at the table, and we have to discuss what our options are. And we've done that, many times. I'm in touch with the architect that Mr. Bonititis put me in touch with. Mr. Halela has been having numerous conversations with Mrs. Sylvia, and I think what needs to happen is, I think we need to have another sit-down to talk about this concept of fundraising. Because if we were able to successfully fundraise, very successfully fundraise, to get lights on our football field, there's no reason why we couldn't sit down and figure out how we're going to fundraise for a project of this magnitude. Now, with regard to knocking down the walls, there are rules, and if anybody knows me really well, they know that this is what I say about rules. We may not like the rules, but we have rules, and we have to follow them. Just like there were many people who were opposed to wearing masks, and we held our ground, there are rules that we had to follow, whether we liked them or not. So, we can't just knock walls down. That's why we have an architect. That's why we have a Department of Education. There are reasons why those walls are there. How they got there is a long and complicated story, but we are in the process of going through a process that we did not ask for, that we are resolving. We are looking at ROD grants. I'm not going to get into what they are. We're in the process of applying for them. The wrestling space, along with that entire hallway that it encompasses, is on that list, along with many other projects that we want to accomplish in the district. So, we have to just continue the conversation about fundraising. We have to take a look at the HVAC unit that Mr. Moran has proposed to us, and we'll take a hard look, and we'll sit down and have a conversation, over and over again, whatever it takes. And the last thing I said to you today, Mr. Bonititis, is that if this doesn't work, if the ROD grant doesn't work, through no fault of anyone, then we have to explore other options. So collectively, I know we can do it. And so, I applaud you. And I also applaud you for adding the element of the fact that your program, our program, is an avenue for our students to seek when there are issues, as well as many others. So, I thank you for making those comments, and we'll continue to have discussions, and we'll sit down again and talk about what fundraising looks like, and we'll keep you updated on how our ROD grant is going. Did we submit that already, Sylvia?
No, that'll be this week or next week.
This week or next week. We had to wait for the ROD grants to open, so.
Do you want to talk about Mallory's?
Oh, thank you, yes. And then, coming back to Mallory's Army, so Diane Grossman called me on Friday. We did have February 22 earmarked, but we mutually postponed that, because we are planning for a bigger event, a more widespread event, where we hope to partner with some surrounding districts and bring in some very, very specific speakers. So, I will be talking more about that when I meet with all the PTA presidents, and when we have our first steering committee meeting.
Okay. You good?
Two seconds.
Two seconds, go ahead. Actually, you have five minutes.
Bob Schinder, President of Lacey Youth Wrestling Club, Forkett River. I believe recently, I don't know how far back, we asked for a shopping list for what your architect is saying needs to be put on the roof in order to have those rooms where we can knock the walls down and have proper HVAC ventilation in them. That has not come to fruition. At this point, I think all of us have been beaten down enough that we are willing to listen to what your architect is saying, even though it is against what our architect had said, and we just want to get it done. So, if you guys can provide us with the shopping list that he's saying he needs, we will actively go out and try and find it. I think you saw on Sunday, we are a fundraising monster. I believe we cleared, like, $14,000 on Sunday, and we have two events coming up this weekend. We can make the money. We just need to figure out what we have to do to get it done. So, if we can get the shopping list, I know you guys can't really answer questions, but the 15-ton unit, is it only for the wrestling room? The two classrooms and the wrestling room behind it? Or is it for areas like the detention room, woodshop?
Unfortunately, we can't answer that for you right now. We have two other things that were brought to us from other avenues that we, our architect is dealing with, and that are time-sensitive. So, until those are dealt with, we can't have him work on that yet.
Okay.
I'm hoping to have him work on that soon.
Okay.
Because the deadline is next week that we're dealing with.
That's fine. I would just say that every professional that I've spoken to, when you take a 40-by-80 space with a 14-foot ceiling, for the changeovers that are needed for an athletic room, a seven-and-a-half-ton unit is all you need. That is, it's documented, professionals are saying it. I don't know where the 15-ton unit's coming from, but if that's what you need, we will go ahead and find one. But I just want to say that everything that I'm seeing, and professionals are telling me, a seven-and-a-half-ton unit will do the 40-by-80-by-14-foot space that the classroom, hallway, and wrestling room would, you know-
We have Mr. Moran's email, and we have that. I forwarded it already to our architect.
Okay.
So, it's in queue.
Okay.
It has to wait, though, until we get this other thing taken care of.
I appreciate that. So, just, in closing, you guys always say you support us. We say we want to work with you. Let's figure out how to do it.
We're getting there.
Okay, are there any other comments before we go on to committee reports? Okay, it is, did they leave? If anyone'd like to leave now, before we do committee reports, be our guest. I know you don't want to sit and listen to it.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
See this kid walking in a new race shirt on, and all of his hair is short. Turning around for the selfie, and all of his kids are just looking at him. I looked at him, and he almost shit a car out. No, he took it. I don't think he did. Dude, did you ever wear your headgear? Come on. Okay. Right? Like I said, you don't wear your headgear. It's hard. Snap it on, keep it on. All the gear, all the time. See ya.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we'll start with committee reports.
Thanks for coming.
Come on.
No, I'm going. I didn't know you wanted to go.
Mr. Plino, can you report on finance, please?
Sure, shoes and doors shut. Good night.
No one's listening.
Thank you.
Close that door, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon's listening.
Are you ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Ed, can you hear me out there? All right. Finance. So myself, Ms. Downey, Ms. Claus, Dr. Pereira, and Miss Sylvia met on February 13th for a lengthy discussion. We discussed the Emergent in Capital Maintenance Needs Grant. We received the funds, and work has started on the phase-out protection at the middle school and doors at selected locations from that fund. Securing our Children's Fund Act, the district is still waiting for the approval from the state on the spending plan, once it becomes available. The rod grant, the application just opened up, so we're going to be applying for this rod grant. And just a reminder, that the rod grant, any projects we take on for capital projects, we have to pay upfront 100% first, and then we get reimbursed 40%. HVAC grant, we were updated on this, the district is working with the architect on the application for it. We also spoke about a complex sign, sports complex sign...
Can I interrupt you one second?
What happened?
We actually submitted that grant.
Which grant?
The HVAC. That was submitted yesterday.
Okay, so you submitted it?
Yes.
Okay, since Monday. All right, very good, thank you. The high school sports complex sign, that's a sign right by the walkway, near the softball field, tennis courts, it welcomes people heading out towards soccer fields, it's in disarray. So the High School Parent Teacher Association, PTA, is donating an athletic sign, and we were presented with a sample of what that's going to be, with maybe some minor changes, but we certainly appreciate that. We spoke about Synergistic. Synergistic is a company that we signed on with at the end of the year, it's for our energy use. So at this time, we have a part-time energy specialist, was accepted, accepted our district's offer for employment. This person has previous history working with Synergistic, the company, so it's going to be a lot easier getting this person up and going, so we can start saving some energy. Our grant committee, led by our Assistant Business Administrator, Mr. Bedell, led some discussion on this. His committee is working on three, I believe?
Four.
Four. Okay, so we're working on four grants at this time. We also spoke about having a November ballot question, in reference to expenditures raising the cap for certain things. A question like that for November, for the public to vote on, is something that is not already on our agenda item. So, you know, we were tossing around some things, if we were going to present it for a November question, we'd have to look at things, and for an example, something like that would be our Class III officers. If we didn't have Class III officers because of funding from the township side, we'd have to go to security armed officers, which you already have two of, we could put that on a November question, because it's not something we already budgeted for. That's just an example. We spoke about the S2 litigation. Lacey's among probably, how many, 20 school districts, Miss Sylvia?
Yes.
About 20 school districts that we have started a suit against the state, because they refuse to tell us what the funding formula is. They just say, "This is the formula, and we're not going to tell you what it is." So, but the judge did compel the state to release the fund, the formula, I'm sorry, they gave the formula, but they didn't explain what all the hieroglyphics were, so nobody could really figure it out, what it is that they're trying to formulate. So now, it's going back to the judge to compel the state to give us the additives for the hieroglyphics. So that's where we are with the litigation, we're still in that, and we thought about maybe jumping out of it for finances reasons, but whether we're in, whether we're out, we are still a Republican community in a Democratic state, and it really wouldn't make a difference if the state of New Jersey's not going to recognize us. That's the way it is. The TIPS program, this is a new cooperative purchasing system, we're going to have the resolution on this on our agenda here. And this program, Miss Sylvia, this is for projects like doors and stuff like that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Esser salaries, we also discussed that the current, people that are under, that were hired under Esser funds, those funds come due to the end of '24, I believe, yes?
Yes.
So at the end of '24, we're going to have salaries that, somebody's motioning to somebody to leave over here, I don't know who that is. So, we have some people who were hired under Esser, their salaries come due at the end of '24, so we have to look into how we're going to merge these individuals onto our budget, rather than funding them through Esser, because we won't have that money to do that. Linkit and NJTSS. Surprisingly, this is a New Jersey-tiered system of supports. This new program, Linkit and NJTSS, this is going to replace, let me see if I have it right, N-R-I-N-R-S?
I-N-R-S.
I-N-R-S.
I'm going to report on that also in curriculum.
Right, so this is a program that is going to be phased out, this is for evaluation of our children who may be at need, special needs children. So this program's being phased out, we have to accept this program, the state's mandating it, but guess what? They're not funding it, and it costs about $30,000-something thousand a year. Well, it's mandated, we have to do it. It's education, it's an educational thing that we have to, we have to teach our professionals to do, to evaluate children, because we're phasing out the old one, but they're not paying for it. So now we have to come up with $90,000 over the next three years. We talked about our 23, 24 budget projection. You know, we're going to be roughly $4 million in the hole for that, and we knew this was coming, no surprise. The only surprise to us was our stabilization aid, which we thought we would get at least $1-point-something million, and we only got $200,000. Not happy about that, but there's nothing we can do about that. Food services, there was much discussion about privatizing our food services program throughout the district. The committee, the finance committee is recommending that we table it for now until, at least until the fall of the '23, start of '23 year, because we do have some things, you know, going on in our food services, we're really not interested at this point. We spoke about, again, the energy specialists that we're going to be hiring, we spoke about our nurse, our substitute, substitute nurse rates. We have, we have a twofold problem. One, we are the lowest paying rate for substitute nurses in the county, and nobody wants to come here when we need a sub. So we have to increase that to get substitutes, so we're, let's see, where are we at currently, Miss Sylvia? 1:30 we're currently?
1:30 a day, yes.
Right, we're currently 1:30, we're looking to go up on that, yes?
We were going to talk about that again next month.
Okay, so that's, right now it's tabled until next month?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so currently we're at 1:30, and that's the lowest, one of the lowest, second to the lowest in the county, believe it or not. And for those that don't know, if we don't, if we can't get a substitute nurse to come here, we have to have shared nursing services, so if Milpon doesn't have a nurse, the Cedar Creek nurse has to watch both buildings. So that's why we have to start raising our rates. The bus van purchases, I know Mr. Scanlon asked a question about that. So we had a lease, lease purchase, which was coming due the end of the year, at the end of this year, it was a $92,000 lease purchase for some buses and vans, that is coming due, we have to replace some of them, so that's what we're proposing. But in order to do this, to keep our payments the same, Mrs. Sylvia did her due diligence and went from a five-year to a seven-year lease purchase program, so it's going to make it feasible for us to maintain the same payment we have, close to it, and be able to purchase some new buses for our system here. We spoke about workshops and professional days we have to do, and we also are entering into a new copier lease with, it's another company, right? It's not the same company?
Correct.
Yes, and it's going to save us some money over the course of the year, so we're getting a new lease program. And other than that, that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Plino.
Any questions? Any questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Does it cost us any money to put an RFP out there?
For?
Food services.
No, I don't believe so.
I'm sorry, what was?
An RFP?
Why not put the RFP out there, and then we can do a side-by-side comparison to see whether or not we're saving the money that projected to save? I mean, we're talking about, we were frowning upon the fact that the food service company's an outsourced company, but so is Synergistic, and so is Linkit. So why not bring someone else in who can help save the district money and keep everybody employed?
Linkit is a mandated program, so...
I know, but nonetheless, it's, it's, it's...
Right, and Synergistic is not a company that's coming in to replace anybody, so...
This isn't either, though.
Well, it is.
It isn't.
It is, they do, they come in and they get rid of your management, and they, they keep, they keep your, they keep the employees on their payroll, but they do get rid of your management. So there's pros and cons to it, and the reason why we're not doing it is because there wasn't board support to do it at this moment, however, it is going to be looked at for the fall of this upcoming year.
The key is at this moment. The board and the committees, they did say, "Let's put it off until summer," that gives our cafeteria more time, Mr. Ramos?
Remo.
Remo, the opportunity to get done with what he is trying to get done. And our administration are so swamped right now with the budget preschool to ask them to do an RFP at this time, they're like overwhelmed right now. So that's why we thought doing, yeah, go ahead, Cheryl.
I'll wait for comments, I'm going to wait for mail comments.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Miss Kim?
Sure. Okay, I'm going to talk about policy. It was myself, Ms. Armato, Mr. Conity, Dr. Pereira, and Miss Sylvia. We have two policies that we're abolishing tonight that were COVID policies. Policy 1648 was the road to recover, road forward COVID-19 health and safety. They have not released any recommendations or requirements regarding protocols for COVID-19 for the 2022, 2023 school year, therefore Strauss Esme recommends that we abolish Policy 1648. Policy 1648.13 is school employee vaccination requirements. On August 15th, 2022, Governor issued Executive Order 302. Executive 302 rescinded the requirements of 253, which required all public, private, progral school systems and elementary school, and secondary schools to adopt a policy that require all covered workers to either provide adequate proof to the school district they have been fully vaccinated, or submit a COVID test, minimum one to two times weekly. As a result, the Governor issuing Executive Order 302, Strauss Esme recommends that we abolish this policy. We discussed Policy 0152, Board Officers. This is a bylaw that we have revised to provide a board, two options for electing board officers, one with a majority of vote of the board present, and the other with a majority vote of all members. Lacey Township School District Board of Education elects officers with a majority vote of all board members present. Aside from minor language changes, nothing else has changed. Then we discussed Policy 0161, Call, Adjournment, and Cancellation. This bylaw has been revised to better align with the current governing statute, NJSA These minor revisions are minimal, they provided additional details to current administrative code requiring the process for calling a special meeting. We also discussed Policy 0162, Notice of Board Meetings. This has been revised to better align with current governing statute, Open Public Meeting Act. The bylaw guide 0162 has been updated to provide the definition adequate notice from NJSA 104-8 to Open Public Meeting Act, additional details on the board conducting an emergency meeting without adequate notice, and some additional details on requirement for rice notice. We also discussed Policy and Regulation 2423, Bilingual and ESL Education. This statute required updates. A few key revisions include addition of alternate English language proficiency assessments for students who meet the criteria for statewide alternative assessments, a revision to the definition native language, and a requirement of school district to administer a statewide home language survey to determine which students have the native language other than English. We discussed Regulation 3212, Personal, Professional Staff Attendance and Review Implement Plan. Revisions were made to update language to correlate with the contract between LTEA and LTBOE as it pertains to providing doctor's notes for unexcused absences. This regulation was placed on last month for first read, however, there was an error that was noted, so we're placing it again for first read tonight. We discussed Regulation 4212, Support Staff for Attendance, this is new. This regulation was created for support staff as it relates to staff attendance review and improvement plans. We also discussed Policy and Regulation 8330, Student Records. The revisions in policy are minor, with changes being citation and language updates. We have a new policy tonight, well, we have a new regulation tonight, but we're updating our Policy 7460, which is energy conservation, and the Regulation 7460. This was revised to reflect the district's recent improvement of the Contract of Energy Management and Healthier Building Services through Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System and Funding Savings, savings generated by services for Synergistics. We had nothing co-curricular. Safety and security is on here, we had nothing, but that actually is going to head down to facilities for next month. Nothing for LTASA, and we also, under other, discussed privatization of food services that was led by Miss Sylvia, and the committee recommended we're just going to table it at this time. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Claus?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So Ms. Claus, the Policy 152, Board Officers, so we currently do majority of officers that are, members that are here. What is it looking to change, though, did you say?
We're going to keep it the same.
Oh, okay, all right. Very good.
Okay.
Any others? Okay, Mr. Peters, Facilities, or is Mr.?
Mr., I was going to ask it tonight, I asked Mr. Conity to take over for me, and I'm back, but I want him to do it.
Okay, Mr. Conity, Facilities, please.
Here goes nothing. It was Mr. Peters, Mr. Armato, myself, Miss Sylvia, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Remo. Mr. Remo put on a presentation and spoke about the negative balances that the students have accumulated in five months or so. Mr. Smith updated us all on the work, pinged on all over the district. A couple of these things, Mr. Plino already touched on, but under Facilities, had updates on the SDA Emergent in Capital Maintenance Needs Grant, update that we received money and work's been started. Securing our Children's Future Bond Act update, heading on approval on that, rod grant, hopefully in about two weeks or so. Jase Controllers at Hanoka Harbor and Cedar Creek Elementary's, that'll be started by the end of this month. Synergistics, same thing. Tech steps on the partnership, and that, we'll be looking to hire the specialists at tonight's Facility also updated. that the students have accumulated in five months or so. Mr. Smith updated us all on the work, things done all over the district. Couple of these things, Mr. Plino already touched on, but 100 Facilities. Head updates on the SDA Emergent and Capital Maintenance Needs Grant, update that we received money and work's been started. Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act update. Heading on approval on that, Ra grant. You heard, hopefully in about two weeks or so. Jase Controllers at Hanover Harbor and Cedar Creek Elementarys. That'll be started by the end of this month. Synergistics, same thing. Tech steps on the partnership, and that, we'll be looking to hire the specialists at tonight's meeting. Facility also updated. Also on the partnership with the New Jersey Clean Energy. And then the TIPS Purchasing System, the local purchasing system. HPAC Project Update, Pedal Schools being worked on, and HPAC will be completed by March. Fire Alarm Update from Mr. Smith, still waiting on parts and everything else, so. Exterior Lighting, Mr. Smith provided updates on that. And then, Ms. Sylvia, Haven's Updates on the STEM Room Project. We awarded the contract and they're working to get them started. And then the Sports Complex sign up in the back on behalf of the High School PTSA. And then, Mr. Zelinski discussed the Preschool Expansion Program. Still, we're to follow on that. As far as food services, Mr. or Ms. Sylvia talked about replacing tables in the cafeterias. So we're going to be looking to approve some of them tonight. And additionally, the privatization of the food services was discussed and to table it later on. As far as use of facilities, it was, given a list of all the facility approvals for tonight, and that was it, and did I miss anything? I think we're good.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Conity or Mr. Peters?
Facility meeting?
Yes.
And we had a discussion about the food service, but we never spoke about tabling it because we all sat there and ate it. And we all thought how good it was, so I don't remember having a conversation about.
Well, we had the conversation on it, you know, then how was, because we were rushing out to go to the workshop. You know, that's, her was, I left off.
All right, I just want to make sure there was no conversations with me not present.
I was deep in the room, word, I apologize, but.
So I don't know how, something that I'm a committee member on, how a conversation got tabled without me knowing about it.
Like I said, maybe tabled is not the correct wording. Discussion followed, and that was it. There was no decision from our committee to move ahead on it or not, so.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
In regard to the cafeteria, what Mr. Conity was referring to is the balances, so where people owe money?
Yeah, so what he was saying is if a student comes in, doesn't have honey, for lunch, or on their account, they can't deny them or restrict them to a certain lunch, is that right?
Cheese sandwich.
So have to give them a full lunch, and I believe it was up over $12,000 or so, so far, so.
So I just want to read this statement from our business office. "We want to remind everyone that, starting this year, school year, lunches are no longer free. No longer free unless you fill out a free and reduced lunch application and are approved. Applications are located in the parent portal as well as on our website. During COVID, the state and federal government extended the benefit of free lunches to all students through June 2022. So if you are still experiencing a hardship, we urge you to fill out a free and reduced lunch application as soon as possible. And all balances already incurred to this state are still owed." Date, not state, date, are still owed, so, you know, you may be getting notices that you owe money to the cafeteria. And if you are having hardships paying that, please fill out the free and reduced lunch application, and they are in the parent portal. If you have any questions, you can call the business office and they can help you walk through it or whatever.
Or Mr. Remo.
Or Mr. Remo in the cafeteria, right, right.
His number is.
On the website.
Sure, go ahead.
You probably don't know it, but I'm going to ask you anyway because you're the.
Me? Okay.
Queen in charge.
The queen, yeah, queen.
What is our deficit right now for the, for the school lunches?
$12,000.
Okay, so this is the discord that I'm going to speak about soon because finance was never made privy of this. So this is something that was in facilities but never made its way to finance. So we're $12,000 in the hole already for lunches.
That's, $12,000, right?
Great.
So, as I said, if you have a balance and you're having trouble paying it, fill out that free and reduced lunch form. Last committee that met was Curriculum Committee. On the committee are Mrs. Armato, Mr. Peters, myself, Dr. Pereira, and Mr. Zelinski. The first thing we talked about in length was the NJTSS. In education, you have all these acronyms. New Jersey Tiered System of Support. This is what Frank was alluding to before. And this is a phase-out program. Right now, schools use the discrepancy model to evaluate or to go through the INRS Intervention and Referral Services Committee. So we had a presentation from Linkit. Frankie Jones was the presenter. And Mr. Zelinski then led a discussion of the transition that all schools will have to make as the state abandons the use of the discrepancy model to determine special education eligibility. So with the discrepancy model, and you can jump in and help if, okay, when a child is being evaluated, if their test scores or their IQ score, whatever they're using, is not equal to or.
Their grade, where their grade level should be.
Where the grade level should be, thank you. There is a discrepancy. And they're getting rid of that model, and they're using this New Jersey Tiered.
Multi-tiered system of support.
Yeah, the T, NJTSS. So, Mr. Bond and Mrs. Amos was also in attendance and presented on the upcoming changes and how the transition will take place and the professional development that will be required and how it will benefit all stakeholders as we initiate this significant change. So this thing that we're voting on tonight is for professional development, for how the teachers will use Linkit. Is that pretty clear? Okay. We also, the three of us.
I'm sorry, real quick, can I have a question, just so.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just to emphasize, how is this new development and this new system going to benefit the schools in the school districts around the state? Do you have, how is that going to be better than what we're using now?
Okay, you want to answer that?
Yeah, sure. That's a great question. So, right now, we have what's called INRS Intervention and Referral Services. So it is a model that's going to improve our processes for Intervention and Referral Services. But we can't just throw it out there and expect that, you know, our teachers are going to understand what to do or how to do it or how to implement it. And so Linkit has a, I guess for lack of a better word, a module that is going to assist us with that. And, you know, we've been to many presentations of Spring Lake School District was one that I recently attended, and I listened to how they rolled out their implementation from start to finish. So it's designed to strengthen the INRS model to provide assistance to our students who are struggling before they get to the child study team.
So in essence, then, it's going to possibly decrease the amount of children that are classified when they really should be?
Yes.
Yes, right. And it's, that's the acronym. It's a multi-tiered system of approach. So there's many tiers leading up to if the student does in fact need to be evaluated by the child study team for a possible classification.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. We then reviewed two new novels for sixth grade for the English department, Flying Lessons and Other Stories. They, and the other one was They Called Us Enemy by George Taki. Did I say it right, Taki? And they were reviewed, these two books were reviewed by the sixth grade English teachers and instructional coaches, and they're going to be used for novel studies to support the sixth grade curriculum. And Mrs. Armato, did you read both of them? You read the one I know, right?
I read, I read a couple of chapters of the first one.
The Flying Lessons?
I'm still reading it, yeah.
And I read the They Called Us Enemy. Skip, you read that one too, right?
Yeah, I just gave them a small.
And that's like a, actually like a comic book book. It was very interesting to read. So they're on the agenda to be approved. Also, there's a new paraprofessional handbook that has been put together by Mallory, Mrs. Krkowski. The handbook was developed for existing and new paraprofessionals as a ready reference to experience for expectations and responsibilities, and it's a really good handbook. She did a good job on that. We approved an out-of-state field trip for the band and chorus to New York City to see Wicked. And then we approved an overnight field trip for the DECA Club. They're going to Harrah's Waterfront Conference Center, and they're spending the night there. Let's see, we also approved a course for LTH Science for Cyber Security. It will be an honors class. And Karen Hobson is the one who presented the proposal. And John Kuzon presented another, another one, Science for Robotics. So they both sound really interesting. Let's see, Start Strong, we were just given the data, we looked at that as ourselves. I can't talk tonight, sorry. The Technology Department is conducting random phishing tests, and we don't mean phishing with a phishing poll, you know. Mr. Zelinski led a discussion of the random phishing tests that are being conducted by the Technology Department that will include all users, including us as a board. So staff that repeatedly fails, fails these tests may be required to take courses to correct the problem. So be careful what you open. If you're not sure that it's legit, don't open it. Because then you'll have to go to special school to learn. The, they, the community relations, the Intergenerational Club had a sweetheart luncheon on February 15th with Pheasant Run Clubhouse. And, let's see, and we talked about food services. All the committees talked about the food services. That's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
No, that's enough.
Okay. And one other thing, so since we're all here tonight, that steering committee that Dr. Pereira is putting together, we're going to have two representatives on that steering committee. So I've asked Sal Armato and Jack Conity. Jack has kids in school in Milpon.
In high school.
And high school, and Sal has them in middle school and high school. So out of the seven of us, I thought they would be good representatives on this committee. Okay? Thank you. All right, Superintendent, you're done, or you have more to add?
I'm done.
Thank you. Board Member comments. Let's start with Mr. Conity down there.
Congratulations to Mr. Brewer and Ms. Roth. No, we're not, the parents, everything, it's no, no surprise that they're up here tonight, so congratulations. Little Mermaid tickets are on sale. The production is March 30th, 31st, April 1st and April 2nd. Thursday, Friday, Saturday starts at 7:00, Sunday is 2:00 p.m. It sounds a bit, they're almost selling out already, so get on quick. And I attended a three-day conference out in Queensborough two weeks ago now for new board member orientation and had some pretty amazing people from the state. Has an eye-opener on how much more information, so. Other than that, thank you very much, and move on.
Thank you. Mrs. Armato?
Hi, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you for your comments, and I wrote down everyone who spoke and your names and some of the things that you said. I was on the other side last year, and sometimes when I spoke, I felt that, you know, what happened after I spoke, did it fall on deaf ears? So I want you guys to know that I wrote stuff down, and then I'll talk about things at my committees. So if you didn't get your answers, hopefully we can get you some answers. So people are listening. That's very important. I think it's important. And now I want to touch on that food service that you keep hearing tonight. So first, I just want to read something to you. The top 100 New Jersey School District Cafeterias. Hunterdon Central Regional, Passaic Valley Regional, Northern Highland Regional, Summit Cranford, West Essex Regional, Metuchen, Passaic Valley Regional, Harrison, Watchon Hills, Dumas, Paramus, Scotch Plains, Berkeley Heights, Ridgewood, Hopewell Valley, Northern Valley, Morris Hills, Dover, Ridgefield Park, Montville, Ark Ridge, Cedar Grove. Lacey's not on here. So why did I just read that? I listened to what our communities asked this board to do last year, to improve our food services. While strides have been made in the right direction, we can and should do better for our students and staff. As a board member, it's my goal to get Lacey Township on the top 100 New Jersey School District Cafeterias. So why is a school cafeteria so important? We should always strive to be the best in all food, in all services our school offers. And enhancing food services is a simple fix to improve morale for both students and faculty. Food and nutrition matter for memory, concentration, and brain health. In January, I brought the idea of bringing an award-winning food service provider to our district. Sadly, instead of taking the time to understand the many benefits this service would provide our district, my esteemed colleague, Kim Klaus, said publicly last meeting she would never be for outsourcing our cafeteria without even knowing any details. Then she mentioned busing and custodial staff to create a stir, which I can guarantee you pertains zero to the food service discussion. To be clear, busing and custodial services were never brought up and they never will be. Another rumor I want to put to rest, current cafeteria employees would not lose their jobs. In fact, all employees would keep their jobs and maybe offer more hours than our district can currently provide. If anyone had a pension, they would not lose it, and the pension employees could stay on Lacey payroll until they retire. So in regards to our employees, I also care about the local residents and staff, and it's not just you, Kim. I live here too, and I value our community and all in it. In speaking with an employee in another district, she mentioned she actually collects unemployment in the summer in the weeks the schools close, so she feels for her it's an added plus. So the many benefits that this would offer our district, cost savings. Lacey would be able to buy food and supplies cheaper. It's a no-brainer. Why aren't we considering it? We can get our food cheaper. All monies that come in from food service is still Lacey Township. All Lacey keeps all the money earned. A variety of daily lunches, including two to three hot lunches, sandwiches, salads, bento boxes, bagel meals, fruits, vegetables, options for children and staff with allergies, snack choices, fresh baked goods, soft pretzels, funnel cakes, ice creams. I mean, it's like a whole little cafeteria diner. Also promotional days, sushi days, street tacos, omelette days, just things that would bring morale. Specially-designed menus by a team of dieticians who pride themselves in fulfilling students and staff needs for anything food-related. Meal costs from one school I spoke to was about $3.75, but we definitely need an RFP for actual food quotes. No food shaming. Staff never mentions negative balances. Kids always eat. The biggest perk in speaking with other districts who have switched, the kids and staff have no complaints and people love the food. This enhances the current, this will enhance our current food service, especially for students and staff. It's a win-win, and this is not to insult the current cafeteria workers. This is to help them enhance it. This is not letting anybody go. This is enhancing what we currently have. So after all these benefits, the message I received from our board president, Linda Downing, stated there's not enough support from fellow board members at this time, and we can revisit it in the summer. Why revisit in the summer? What will change? If we want to make changes for 2023 and 24, this school year, we need to get the ball rolling with an RFP no later than April 2023. Time is of the essence. So my question publicly. So my question publicly for my fellow board members, why wouldn't you vote to at least see what the RFP offers? And then if it's not acceptable, say no. If we are, if we are all for the kids, we should listen to the parents and the kids who have asked, uh, have asked this board to improve the school food and daily nutrition. Every member of this board should aspire to have our district join the top one hundred school cafeterias in New Jersey. Simply stating I don't want to outsource is closed-minded to the growth and improvement of Lacey School District. Also stating let's give current situation a chance when this board has had years to improve is again unacceptable for the kids. We can only change with change. Taking action now, similar to what the wrestler program had said, and not waiting for convenient time like the summer is the only way to make progress. I ask this board to have a sense of urgency and to reconsider an April twenty twenty-three RFP. We are what we do, not what we say. We may consider to do at a future date. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Claus.
Sure. Okay. I just wanna start with wrestling that, um, I'm actually excited that we're gonna, um, that the grant, the rod grant is gonna have C-Wing on there, so I'm really hopeful, um, that that will go through. I think we're gonna apply in about two weeks-ish and then it could take months to find out, correct? So, um, that's what we're hoping for, so we can get this moving for you. Okay? All right. Um, and about the food services, um, it's my opinion, the board doesn't have to like it, um, but I am not for outsourcing. I am for improving if, if it's for the school taste or, you know, if we're short money. Apparently we're not short money, um, but if there's something that needs to be improved, I am all for that. Um, I am not for outsourcing. It's just my opinion and five other board members at this time. Um, so I do feel like it's a slippery slope. Once we start it, we can do secretaries, aides, busing, uh, maintenance, we can do it all. But why do that? Let's just stick with what we have. Joe has changed the cafeteria tremendously since he started. Um, actually, I haven't heard any food complaints since he came in. I know he meets with the kids regularly, um, but if there are issues, I'm all for changing the food vendor, um, but I do not wanna outsource our employees. I feel it's just not right for Lacey. So is it closed-minded? I don't know. Maybe, but I don't, that's my opinion. And the people that voted me in feel the same way. Um, and I'm sure some of those same people voted for you, um, but again, that's, you know, but that's just where I stand. So I'm not gonna change my mind on that. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Um, Mr. Armato?
Hi. Um, congratulations to everybody that was recognized tonight for their achievements. Pretty impressive. Um, for me, I know you'll probably have it next month in your, your, your minute, which is usually now three to four to five minutes.
You were getting it from your alarm.
I'd like to recognize and congratulate both our men's high school and middle school basketball teams that are both, uh, for earning conference championships. Um, the middle school team with a big win over McCullough and our high school team with a big win over Central Regional. Uh, these two teams are very special to me. Um, they're very special to me because, one, both my sons play on them. My son, one son on the high school team, one on the middle school team. And also because many of the boys were raised right here and playing ball at Lacey Towns- Lacey Lions Basketball Club. Um, and even more importantly, for me, selfish, I coached a lot of them. So when I look out on the floor and I see a lot of my players contributing to a conference championship, it makes me proud as, both as a coach and as a father and, uh, and to all the other coaches that contributed through the years for these kids. And last night, one of our, one of our all-time greats, I call them, Troy Buxton, uh, achieved the basketball milestone in hitting his thousandth point last night against West Long Branch. And, uh, if you ever played basketball, scoring a thousand points in four years, it's, it's a hard thing to do. Um, so congratulations to Troy Buxton. Um, really impressive. And I'll tell you what, this group, this, this team that we have right now has two thousand point scorers. Chris Ventaroso did it last year as a junior and this year we have Troy Buxton that did it this year as a senior. So congratulations to those boys. Um, they're phenomenal. They're phenomenal. And we have a lot of phenomenal and, and, and really cool young guys on those two teams. So congratulations to those guys. Um, for me, I think as a board, we're making strides and, and I'd like to present our superintendent and business administrator with more ideas and more opportunities to help save the district money. And I think we're doing that. Are we agreeing on everything? No. But I think, I think it's gonna sound like, you know, the lady across the hall there has got the same last name as me and I'm teaming up with her. But I think we should explore the food services. Why not? Uh, we did hire an assistant BA. Uh, let's put you to work.
But he does nothing.
I'm, right? You do nothing. The time starts, the time starts this morning? I'm not, I'm not trying to make a joke out of this whole thing, but what I'm trying to do is exactly what we all said we were doing, that was try to improve the district. We all ran on a, on a slogan for the children. It shouldn't be just a slogan, it should be something that we strive to do every day. And I think we do. I think what, what we accomplished tonight in private sessions, what we accomplished tonight as a board is, is, is awesome. Uh, we have phenomenal people coming here to represent their organizations, the wrestling program with pride and passion about continuing to build and save and, and, and good. Our basketball teams, our football teams, our STEM program, the gentleman who's in the symphony. Um, I mean, this is, this is Lacey Township, this is Lacey School District. And, and we get knocked a lot, but guess what? We're making strides. We're getting better. We're getting better every day and it starts from the top. So I thank you, Dr. Pereira, and, uh, you, Ms. Sylvia, for, for taking the bull by the horns, working with us when we make your life crazy and, of course, you help make our life crazy too. So it's a good group. I think, I think we got a lot to work out still, but I think we're making strides. And I think we should open up and, and be open-minded to every opportunity that puts more money back in, in the district's pocket. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Plino?
Thank you. So, um, let's start off. I'm still gonna see if I can say this correctly. Mr. Schoenlieber?
Yes.
The cra- the crazy PE teacher, right?
That's it.
All right. Not bad, right? Not bad for an Italian guy. So, just upfront, I'm not making excuses. You know, us as a board, we don't know about the, the personnel ins and outs like that unless it, it comes to our table at an executive session that we need to know about. And I really feel bad for you. I mean, uh, to become unemployed, you know, like that, and I, I really feel bad. And I, I would like to know what happened with that and I'm sure I'm gonna find out and, and, and how you fell in the cracks like that. I really feel bad and I'm sorry. I apologize to you that this happened to you. And I don't know what happened and I don't think any other board member knows what happened, but I really feel bad and I hope that maybe it can be rectified. And I, I was certainly, am going to question and ask what happened because I don't think it's right, but...
I appreciate your consideration.
Yeah. I, I, it's just, it's, you know, I'm sure there was a good reason for it. I'm sure administration, something happened and I don't know if that was relayed to you. And again, I'm not, I'm not doing a dialogue with you because I'm not allowed to, but I, I just wanna let you know that I, I, I heard what happened here and we all did. I feel bad for you and I'm gonna look into it myself. So, moving on from there, the wrestling team. Let's make one thing clear. These children have a place to wrestle. They are not on the street. They have the wrestling room, the current room that they've had, they have the alternate gym or the cafeteria south, I believe. They have space to wrestle. Let me also be clear, and I said this before, I don't know who I said it to, our responsibility is to our current students, to provide a team and a place for them to wrestle. We are not responsible for the rec program. The Township Recreation Department is responsible for the rec program and those children. Now granted, eventually they will become our student children here, okay? But it is not our responsibility to build places just for the recreational team. Okay? So our, our, our team has a place, we have coaches, they have a room. Do we wanna give them more space? Absolutely. All right? There's priorities. We have almost twenty-five, twenty-six percent of our population that are special needs children and they're pushed around from one room to another without a blink of an eye because the football team needs a room, the wrestling team needs a room, the basketball team needs space, uh, the, the, the dance team needs a room, and these children get pushed around, twenty-five percent of our population, okay? And they're not up here in masses complaining about they have nowhere to go. They, they, they go where they're, they're, they're told to go and, and they, they make do and, and it's unfortunate that, that we have fifty children we have to be responsible for and we're, are accused of not doing the right thing. All right? When's enough's enough. We're looking into it, we get it, all right? But we have other priorities in the school district. We are, we are getting grants that we have to pay for a hundred percent upfront and we will only get reimbursed forty percent. We are going to need our solar project looked at, we need all new roofs for our schools, we have windows that don't work, we have doors that need to be replaced, and God knows what other infrastructure we have to have done. Sidewalk's fixed, parking lots fixed. A room for six, seven hundred thousand dollars for air conditioning, HVAC, to house fifty children, to me, is not a high priority. It's on the list, but it'll eventually get done. And I know that's not maybe the concerns of the rest of my board members and maybe it's a higher priority for them, but it's not for me. So you can come here and bash me next meeting, I really don't care, but let's be, let's, let's face it. Twenty-six percent of our population's being pushed around, okay? And, and they're not getting maybe the educational stuff that they deserve, but we're gonna look at towards, for fifty kids, for, or more space for wrestling. Where's the sense here? Moving on from that. Congratulations to all our award winners. Um, well-deserved, um, outstanding. We have some amazing children in the school district, you know, talking to teachers and talking to, uh, other, other, uh, graduates, the, the things they're doing, amazing stuff. Um, very proud of them. Uh, with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Peters? Do you have a comment?
Huge.
Okay. Go.
It's nine thirty. Have a good eve- have a good evening.
Really? Oh.
Enough's been said.
Okay. You're serious? Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you.
Way to go.
Just got the memo.
I just wanna congratulate all our award winners tonight and I especially wanna, uh, give kudos to Eric Strawn. Strawn? Strawn. He...
You didn't say anything? I'm sorry. Wait, did you say something?
No.
I did.
Oh. Eric Stroin or Strong? Strong. Strong. Um, he made the All-State Symphonic Band and if, if you're not into music, you don't understand what a big thing this is. Um, first of all, they have to re- win their region and there's three regions in the state of New Jersey and then they compete for this. And he won a seat, uh, was he first chair clarinet too? Oh, I don't know. Oh, right, just the fact... Huh? What instrument? He was clarinet. So I just want everyone to, to realize what a great accomplishment that is and congra- he should be happy and he should be so proud. So congratulations, Dan. And that's all my statements for tonight, cause yes, it has all been said. Um, so let's, um, move on to board business. We have some changes. Yes. So Mrs. Silva will...
All right. Um, on page fifteen, uh, number two, uh, Michael Stupiello, it should be, uh, LTMS, not, uh, Milpon, so it'd be middle school, not Milpon.
Who's that?
Uh, it's the very first name.
So Milpon?
Yep. It's, it's Milpon, it should be middle school.
Oh. Should be middle school.
Um, the second, um, correction is on page twenty, number four. Elizabeth Richardson, uh, she will be Esser-funded.
Oh, good.
And that is it for corrections.
That's it? Just two?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's start this new business. Could I have a motion, please, for number one needing minutes?
All motion.
Second, Conity.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Number one.
Oh, number one.
Yep. Just minutes from my...
Yes. Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Number two, list of bills. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, but I need to abstain, uh, nine, five, three, two, eight, seven for, for fire company, uh, two, eight, nine, two, nine, nine, and two, eight, three, three hundred, my employer, and nine, five, five, two, three, four, for myself.
Thank you. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, but I need to abstain from one, seven, three, two, five, one, the Manchester Township BOE, and nine, five, three, nine, nine, one.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and I'm abstaining on bills number nine, five, zero, nine, two, seven, nine, five, three, eight, four, three, and nine, five, zero, four, six, zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a motion for number three, please?
Motion Peters. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Um, number four, the S seventeen oh one reporting, could I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Could I have a motion for items five through nineteen, all finance? Could I have a motion, please?[1546.22] Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That's a lot, five through nineteen.
Five through nineteen, yes.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Can I have a discussion?
Sure.
Number seven and number eight, when we do our contracts like this, is, do we have to do such a long period of time, five years?
Yes.
Every, just for these? Like, we can't do like a three-year? It's not an option?
No.
Okay. If we, for future, if we can see what we can do to shorten that with any future, well, something else, yeah. Okay, that's it.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes, but I'd like to stand on number five, please.
Thank you. Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Number twenty, use of facilities. Could I have a motion?
Motion, Peters.
Is there a second?
Second, Conady.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
I'm good with everything, but I have to abstain from the middle school, Lacy Lions Basketball.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Items twenty-one through twenty-five, transportation and tuition. Could I have a motion?
Motion, Plino.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, but I have to abstain on twenty-two, nine, oh, six, three, seven, seven.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item twenty-six, the calendar adoption for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. Could I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Items twenty-seven and twenty-eight, policy and regulations. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
So I spoke about this last time, uh, number twenty-eight under Board Committee's P zero, one, five, five. And again, this, this facilities committee that you're adding, um, this, this month was a prime example. You're making, we're making this, this a permanent committee. And I understand why you did it, President Downing, because of the upcoming preschool expansion, this, that, and the other thing. It's a, it's a, it's an ad hoc committee which is, which is served just fine, but to make it a permanent thing, again, it's putting hurdles and time wasted into this. So everything that pretty much that, that Mr. Conady spoke about, that you guys had a meeting about facilities, was almost the same thing that we had in finance. However, there was things, financial stuff that was spoke about in facilities, never made it to the table of finance. I think it's, it's, it doesn't see, there's no purpose to be sep- permanently separating those two committees. Those two committees should always be as one because of the fact that everything boils down to finance. Especially the building of facilities is, is the biggest, really the biggest committee that, that's causing, uh, you know, uh, stuff to go on with finance. I, I don't understand the permissive why the board is going for this, so I asked my colleagues to leave it as an ad hoc and, and not, and vote no for a permanent facilities committee. It's just, it's, it's too redundant. It's too much waste of time on our administration. They have to come, stay after hours, whatever, to have another meeting, um, uh, keep them out at night to have redundancy that, that finance is doing. So please, I, I implore either table zero, one, five, five, or, or, or vote no on it. Thank you.
You know the reasons I...
And I understand your reasons why you did it as an ad hoc, and I'm all for that. I get it. But to make it a permanent, permanent thing, it's just, it's just putting too many, too much distance between finance and the buildings and, and our grounds. And, and again, stuff is making to the table of one and not to the other. And, and there's, there's discord there, and there's, there's not continuity. And, and I, I don't understand, you know, I understand the purpose for this year because we're gonna be getting this grant, this, that, and the other thing. But it's, it's just not, it's, it's just redundancy. It's, it's a waste of time. And it's, and nobody, it's, there's non-communication. And again, if, if facilities meets and finance doesn't meet before or after it, if something, if we meet before and the facilities need something, it's gonna be a whole month again before we actually have to vote on something to get money freed up for that, for things. So we're waiting a month to vote on something, to give it money to, to our, to our infrastructure, whatever it may be. I, I think it's, I think it's absurd. That's all.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion, Peters.
Second? Is there a second?
We had our motion.
Oh, we did already? Okay. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Armato? So I'm gonna say yes to everything but Frank just said the P zero, one, five, five. Can I, if I vote no, it's keeping it as an ad hoc, right, for now? Then I'm gonna vote no for that one.
Uh, Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
I'm gonna vote for everything, and Frank convinced me on O one, five, five. I, I vote no for it. Keep it ad hoc.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes, and everything except the, um, zero, one, five, five, no.
Mr. Peters?
Yep.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Number twenty-nine and thirty, um, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Could I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Moving on to item B, donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion, Peters, and thank you.
You second, Kim? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Armato?
Me?
Mr. Armato?
Mister, okay. Thank you, and yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes, and I'd, I'd like to have an extra, a special thank you to the Lacy's Women Club, um, for the eighteen fifty, um, eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. I know the money that they donated is actually fundraised money, so it's hard work to do that, so just want to thank them for that.
Mr. Plino?
Thank you and yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and on behalf of the whole board, um, thank you for all these wonderful donations. Okay, item C, programs and curriculum, one through three.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Question.
Go ahead.
Number one, why are we paying for an overnight trip to Atlantic City?
Do you remember why?
Why can't we commute back and forth?
It's a competition.
It's a competition.
It's a competition.
Yeah.
And they, what?
Were you, we are paying for the hotel?
I think they're fundraising to pay for the hotel.
Overnight field trip.
I think, yeah, but I think they're paying. Aren't they?
I believe they are.
Are they funding this?
I believe they are.
Oh, we're just approving it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking.
They don't want to bring them back. They want to stay there.
Are we transporting?
Yes.
Yes, we're paying for the bus thing, but they're paying for the everything.
The rooms and food and all that?
Right.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Vocal?
Uh, Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
D, professional days and workshops. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and a question. Was Linkit supposed to be in here, in this one, considered this one?
No, because we've approved Linkit.
On the other one, in the front, okay. I didn't know it was supposed to be in this category.
Oh, no.
Because that's, that's considered PD, I guess.
Right. It's an in-house PD, like, yeah, this is...
All right, yes.
Uh, Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Items one through sixteen under E, certificated personnel. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. F, non-certificated personnel. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Question? I'm sorry. Obviously, names can't be used, but number two, is that, on that, previously discussed, or? Because I don't remember if there are anything about this.
Number two, termination.
No, I don't think there's...
No, I don't believe so.
No, because the other ones were tabled for further out investigation, right? No, so that employee was not discussed in private session tonight?
This may not even be that employee. This may be somebody twice.
We don't know.
It is different.
It is different, yeah, because the, the, the stuff we spoke about tonight is still pending further investigation. So we're not terminating anybody from that. I, I was asking
Yeah.
why his one's being terminated if we haven't discussed it, unless it was prior to coming out to the board.
Proper word.
That's why I'm asking.
Would you like to table it, Jack?
Please.
So we get some information?
Please. Number two to table.
Okay. We'll hold off number two for next month. Uh, number two, not table two.
Is that gonna be an issue with, with any type of payment or, or time owed or anything like that? Or if they're transferred to another district?
Okay, yeah, we don't, we don't have that in, we're gonna have to table.
Okay.
You don't have it, right? This must be kept. Non-certificated, so it has to be... All right, so we're gonna vote on numbers one and three through eight. We're tabling number two.
And we're doing the, the adjustment with number four, Elizabeth Richardson, correct?
With the correction, number four, yeah.
Esser-funded.
Correct, yeah. Okay?
Motion.
Oh, she remembered. Okay. Okay. Uh, we do need to vote on number two.
And we did, we did discuss it. It's just that you don't remember, and I will refer to all of your memories. No, we discussed it in committees, not all committees.
Okay.
Okay. We have to vote on it.
So how do we vote on it if all committees discussed it?
Right.
We can go in a private session for five minutes if you want.
Yeah, I wonder what it's about now, because obviously...
I'm not gonna vote on something I don't know about.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna fire somebody and not know what I'm firing them for?
Okay, so let's take them, okay, we get it. Could I have a motion to go in a private session?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll be right back.
I'm leaving my bag here, watch it.
While, while we're waiting for him, um, item two, we were all advised, we just, none of us remembered, so once we got in there, it all came.
Yeah, yes, thank you for clarifying that. We were told, but we just don't remember.
All right, so F...
I know.
So F, non-certificated personnel, items one through eight. Could I have a...
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.